All right, I'd like to begin this evening's Select Board Meeting, October 20th, 2021, here in Brookline, and the time is 6:34.
Record now?
Yes. Okay, present in the room is Everett Mark Bills, Road Supervisor.
It should be.
Recording yet?
Recording in progress.
There we go.
All right, present is Everett Mark Bills, Road Supervisor, Guy Tans, a Town Clerk and Videographer, Gwen Tans, a Select Woman, Stan Nova, a Selectman, Melissa, a Selectman, and myself, Dot Macho. David Jones said he will be joining us later on because he has a work commitment until about 8:00. So if we see him in the waiting room, please someone or not, let him in. Okay, very good. All right, so we'll start meeting and call to order, review the agenda changes, if any. And I had a couple I'd like to add to item 7, Old Business, letter E. Talk about the handicap sign placement. I'd like to add, under my reports, number, item 6, I'd like to talk about a AARP placemaking workshop. And number 7, I'd like to talk about briefly DV Fiber, someone who has stepped up from Brookline to consider going as an alternative, an alternate to represent Brookline.
Clarification?
Yes.
You said item 8, which is reports? And you said number 7.
Number 8, Town Clerk, Select Board Chair. And number 6 would be, see, my number 5 is budget meeting schedule. Number 6 would be the ARC placemaking workshop. Number 7, item 7 that I talked about would be DV Fiber.
Okay, must have an outdated one.
And then.
Page 2, 3, 4, 5.
Under Communications.
And then 6 and 7.
Six and seven. And then under Communications, item number 9, I'm gonna add, where it says number 4 to be determined, a municipal mitigation grant at the form. Okay? It won't take long. Any other changes? Hearing none, okay, we'll move on to review and approve the minutes from the regular meeting on October 6, 2021. First thing we have to do, go through the pages, page 1. The first thing I noticed is that we need to change it from September 6 to October 6. Right at the top of the page. Does anybody have any items to change on page 1? Anybody have any changes for page 2?
Yes.
Sam has a change on page 2.
Yeah, under Initial Business Discussion about Town Audit, second paragraph, the fourth line down. After the word intervals, a semicolon, that a professional accounting firm would insist on initial audit as opposed to a professional audit.
Someone wrote it on you.
All right, anything else on page 2? Page 3? Just at the top of each page, you have to change the date to October 6 on each page. Page 4? I have an item for page 4. Sam, under Historical Society, to the Round Schoolhouse Committee, there was discussion. No negative feedback had been forthcoming. Says Mrs. Now had approved the idea. And she'd say, Mrs. Now has been told of this name change and understood the reason.
Okay.
Anything else on page 4? Page 5? Change the date at the top. I have a change on page 5. Under October 4th meeting with Doug Johnstone, Agricultural Management Specialist. This Miss Macho has met with the complainant and helped with paperwork and plans on visiting with the farmer. I have not yet visited with him. Plans on visiting with the farmer. That's it for page 5, page 6? Page 7?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Page 6.
Under Daycare Building, Last Sense, Mr. Melo. Discuss the pest control vendor suggested painting work on the roof flashing. That should be, that should paint work on the roof, not flashing. And then, work on the gutters and sealing the paint, the bulkhead. Should be painting the bulkhead.
Okay, painting the bulkhead, okay. And this is not the daycare building, this is town hall.
That's correct.
Discuss the.
So I'm sorry to leave.
Just discuss.
It's all a reaction. Long second.
Of the.
It should be under town hall.
Building. Anything else on page 6? Page 7?
Sorry, could you clarify that last correction, please?
The notation of pest control, painting the roof, and painting the bulkhead is of the town hall building, not the daycare building.
The last paragraph under Daycare Building should be put under as another paragraph or a second paragraph under the topic Town Hall.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Okay? Page 7? Page 8? Page 9?
Oh, oh, page 8. Projects, number 4 at the top of the page, other than the date change. I, I don't know, and I've lost track of what the word corrugations, some corrugations, is implied to mean in that sentence.
Bumpy roads.
Corrugated roads.
Right.
What are corrugated?
Corrugated roads, like corrugated carboard.
Corral road roads.
Corral road roads, like corral road plants.
Okay, corrugations, I've never heard of that, that's okay. Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you.
And page 9? I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from Wednesday, October 6, 2021, as amended. May I have a second? Second? Okay, all seconded, but I think we've got a curve. Any other discussion? Besides changing the date to October? Hearing none, all is in favor of accepting the minutes, the draft minutes as amended for Wednesday, October 6, 2021, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? An opposed motion passes, thank you. All right, schedule members of the public. Hank Rucker was, Mike told me he was planning on coming tonight to the Select Board Zoom. I'm told on approximately, and I sent him a copy of the schedule, something would come up, but. So we'll go on right to Samara. Hi, Samara, you're on.
Hi, Dot. Okay, I'm gonna apologize, because I, honestly, it's been, I've been so overwhelmed lately that I don't always remember why I was on, but I assume it was, A, to go over last year's financial statements and also offer some suggestions on possible ways to deal with our treasurer shortage, if you might call it that. Does that sound right to you, Dot?
Right, I just, we were also gonna put together what Frank had said. He had responded to my auditor question about doing an audit. And he suggested that in order to have an audit done, it would be best after six months to, you know, after a new person is hired and they have gone through six months or more, because best practices would be for the new person working. So we can't have, until we hire someone and they are really involved in the process, he suggested not to do an audit, but.
I would, I think, I mean, given the work, I, I don't think, with no disrespect to the Select Board, I generally find that boards sometimes who haven't dealt with outside auditors don't understand all the work that's involved. So I guess if we're, if we're gonna open with that, what I would say is, I would say that, you know, I've given some thought to how to manage the Treasury Department, maybe simplify it, maybe put it back together with the Town Clerk position, even though our internal auditors were pretty adamantly opposed to that. And so I put some notes down, and one of the things I thought that in lieu of whoever comes in as the new treasurer, actually, I have a question. Does Mike Masters want out immediately, or is he willing to stay on through town meeting? Do you know? What did he say? I'm just curious.
I don't have the actual email with me, but I understood him to say that he would like to be replaced sooner rather than later, but would say his commitment to town meeting.
Yes.
Okay, so what, have you taken any steps, I mean, to?
I don't know where, I, I, no.
I think I would, okay, so I know Dot and I, I mean, we've talked individually, so let me just go through some of the things. One of the things I thought initially, and which would be the ideal situation, would be to actually, whoever comes in as treasurer, is to have someone who really understands accounting, a real bookkeeper. And to go about hiring a bookkeeper here is unfortunately not easy. Finding a qualified bookkeeper who's willing to do it at whatever rate the town can afford and isn't already fully booked is gonna be a challenge. So while, and that bookkeeper could either report to the Select Board or to whoever steps in as treasurer, or you could do a, you could do some sort of a written contract in addition to the oath. You know, just assistant treasurers and treasurers have to sign oaths. A bookkeeper, I would suggest, would have a contract and be an outside contractor. But I think, unfortunately, I've tried to do some research on who might be available, and most of the people who are really good are fully booked, so that will be a problem. And instead, I thought whoever would step in as either an interim treasurer until town meeting, if appointed, if you choose to, like, reach out and see if anyone's interested, or if you ask Michael to send out an email saying, you know, I'd like, basically saying, I'd like to be replaced sooner rather than later, and if anyone's willing to step up, you know, please let us know, please respond to, and then decide who that he should respond, he or she should respond to. And then you can determine whether or not you want to appoint someone for an interim treasurer until town meeting, when obviously it would go up for election again. But what I was thinking is whoever comes in, you might want to take some of that audit reserve that we have, which is about $4,000, and at least hire an outside accountant, see if there's someone locally who's an account, you know, either a firm or an independent accountant who would come in and help with the year-end reports, because that would be not an audit, but it would be like accounting assistance. I know a lot of towns have used one of the ex-Nemric employees to help with that, and that might be a possibility. I'm still researching, just so you know, I've been calling friends who are on Select Boards, because I have several on other town Select Boards, and everybody is struggling with this, so we're not alone, but even, and particularly if we do recombine the Town Clerk and Treasurer job, which is common in this state, then the next issue, the issues would be how to create enough internal controls so townspeople and you guys are confident that there's oversight and some assistance to whoever takes on the job. Because it's not an impossible situation, you just have to think about how to structure it. And I'll just pass along my notes. After this meeting, I'll scan and send them to all of you. I know I had talked to Bruce briefly, and one of the things, and I know the auditors consider this, is there's an Internal Controls Checklist that BLCT puts out that helps define how to create enough separation of tasks so that not only is the town protected, but the treasurer is protected, you know, from accusations and whatever may come their way. So the other thing I think that we should consider doing is simplifying our year-end reports. Right now, they've always been dumped into Excel and then put into different formats, and I think we can significantly reduce the work by using simplified versions of the reports that Nemric produces. And then the only, the only thing that would be, probably need to be in a similar format, would be the budget for approval. And if you haven't checked, I'm sorry, I sent out draft year-end reports for June 30th, 2021, but I did it kind of late because we had sort of, Judy and I had an overlap use, need to use the computer, so I got a late start. So if you haven't had a chance to look at them, please print them out and look at them and email any questions you've got. You can either use my personal email or the town email, and someone will forward it to me. I've talked about, I think we could do, you know, who in their household pays their bills immediately as soon as they come in? I pay them by the time they're due, but I don't drop everything and pull out my checkbook as soon as it comes in the mail. Generally, I schedule my bills, I try to write almost all my checks once a month. So I would suggest maybe we simplify and only do warrants on a monthly basis. And that will cut down on some paperwork and hours required for the Treasury job.
You mean just not payroll warrants, you mean just accounts payable warrants?
I'm just talking accounts payable warrants, but we could also consider a less frequent payroll schedule. So a bi-weekly payroll is usually used for full-time people who need their, who are like on a, you know, they must have their cash immediately because they're living paycheck to paycheck kind of thing. I mean, they're done for the convenience of an employee. We have no full-time employees. We have certain individuals who don't hand in their timesheets bi-weekly. And then we have some people who only get paid a stipend annually. So in my opinion, I think, you know, you could easily simplify the, so a bi-weekly payroll period is 26 pay periods. A bi-monthly payroll period would reduce it down to two times a month, which would be 24 pay periods. And if you really wanted to go like, well, what colleges do is they pay monthly. And monthly would be one paycheck per month, and of course, it requires people to, for, who are getting more regular paychecks, which is currently, maybe some assistant treasurers and the Town Clerk and Assistant Treasurer. You know, we could, we could go there. I don't know if there's any cost savings with the payroll company. I was, it's on my to-do list to call and find out, but it would also cut down on the hours spent doing payroll, which is time-consuming. And also, one advantage of a bi-monthly payroll over a bi-weekly is that there's always a clean cutoff year-end, because it always ends at the end of a month. It's usually, bi-monthly pay periods usually go on the 15th and then the last day of whatever month it is. So that's another thing to consider. And then, one thing that, another thing that we, I've kicked around in my head, and this is of course coming from, I came from Cook County, and taxes are paid twice a year. And many towns in Vermont only have one tax collection a year, and we have four. And that creates a lot more work. So if we could reduce to at least twice a year, that would cut down the hours required in the treasurer position. And now, given that we know some people are cash-strapped, I did find out, I have a friend on the Select Board in Wardspurrow, and they're using a new, I don't know how new it is, but it's a system called MunicePay that offers electronic payment options. You can send an e-check to pay your taxes, and there's either a $1 or $2 fee per payment. I can't remember if it's a $1 fee or a $2 fee. Or if you choose to pay by credit card, which some townspeople have asked for, there's only a 2% interest charge on credit card payments. And that's another thing on my punch list, to call and get the details on their services. So, and then the last thing that I would say for cost saving as you head into budget is when you look at the reports that I sent out earlier today, take a close look at all the underused expense items on the, particularly, only in Funds 1 and 2, they're not so good, but in Fund 1, I'll note, we had budgeted $3,000 for legal expenses, we didn't use any of it. So that, that could be reallocated somewhere else. And I don't remember off the top of my head, but I have the reports in front of me. And yeah, I, you know, you'll look, as you look at the report, you'll see the budget column, then the actual, and then how much was used. And anything that says actual of bud, actual percent of budget, if it has 0%, it means we didn't use any of that line item. So going forward in the coming year, you should consider whether then that line item needs to be retained, whether it should be reduced, or whether it could be redirected to an area that needs more funding. So.
But that's only period 3. We still have nine to go, that's only period 3, we still have nine months to go.
No, this is from the end of last year. We don't have any, any months to go last year. I'm looking at last year.
You have an end of year?
I'm not looking at this year, I'm looking at last year's budget.
We don't have that report then?
No, I sent it out late, it went out in email at about a quarter to 6:00. And I left some hard copies on the, so apologies again for that. The September reports are, obviously, we're only in period, period, that's only up to period 3, so that tells you what's left for the current year. But we didn't look at this when we allocated for this, you know, we're always like a year behind. You know, the data we're using to determine the FY '23 budget will be based on FY '21, you know, results, and possibly, you know, looking at how the current year is doing, you know, if you can project the current year budget. You following me? You with me, kind of, sort of? Okay. So yes, that's a little bit problematic. When you do look at them, I could, on Funds 1 and 2, when you do look at those reports for last year, which are, they're coming to you in PDF form marked Preliminary Financial Reports. I forget the exact title, but they're PDFs that are all, you know, labeled preliminary and unaudited. I've made almost all the adjustments. There's some probable, just like, Assistant Treasurer and Treasurer amounts are probably not right, but the bottom line is okay. And the bottom line shows a small surplus in the current year in Fund 1, and a large current year deficit in Fund 2, but overall, neither fund is in a deficit position. So you know, the deficit in Fund 2 was of course caused by spending down the paving surplus, so. So there was a lot of paving that was done over budget last year. So, but you guys, I mean, that was a known thing, that was a decision to, you know, spend some of the surplus funds in Highway Fund. But since I got these out late, again, I would just say, just send me any questions that you can think of that come up when you have a chance to read through them more leisurely.
Okay. Bruce has a question.
Samara?
Yeah.
I'm trying to look pretty much everything of what you're saying. But my overview of the situation is that we need a book, obvious, need a bookkeeper, a CPA, an accountant, or somebody to take control of the situation. And the only way I see, the only way I see that happening is if we pay somebody. And I'm not even sure that that's gonna happen, because everything is so tough right now. People are looking for people to work, like you said, the people that you knew, Samara, are out straight, you can't get anybody. So I think that, I think that that's our, I appreciate everything you were saying to analyze, making things simpler and more cost-effective and easier going forward and more understandable. And boy, I'm into simplicity, but I think the basic problem we have is we're not getting resolved, which is very difficult, it's been going on for the last couple of years since you, you wanted to leave after eight years, and that we get somebody in the position and they flip out. But I don't see that.
That's an ongoing problem, and that's, that's why I kind of wonder if you aren't gonna end up needing to figure out how to recombine the Town Clerk and Treasurer position into one position, which would offer a person close to 30 hours of work a week, easily. And then you could treat it as more like a full-time position and create something more attractive to a younger person who needs to support a family and wants more hours than, the Treasury position right now is about combined between Assistant and Treasurer, is somewhere between, depends, I would say 15 hours a week is probably a pretty good best. But 15. I mean, combining the assistant.
There's the problem, and there's the, there's the problem right there. You're not gonna get any, who are you gonna get, a talented person that unless they retire or in their 80s, like Judy, not to put her down, because I'll be there soon.
She did, she did your ADP warrant, so don't knock her.
Oh, not, no, no, I was not knocking anything, anything like that. I guess we're driving at.
No, this, it's a problem.
Yeah, we need, we need a penny. How do we find somebody that's not, doesn't, how do we find somebody that doesn't already have a full-time job? Or a CPA, I call my CPA that does, does my, my tax, of course, she's getting charged retirement.
Well, the other, the other issue you have too is not every bookkeeper, it has to be, I talked this over actually with a woman at Nemric, Darlene, who used to be a financial manager for another town. And she said, other towns are going this route of looking for a regular bookkeeper. Now, I know other towns do sometimes hire someone to do the bookkeeping. I mean, there's, there's all different ways, you know, there's a million different ways to do it, but given that we're a small town. The issue of creating a position that has enough hours. To attract someone to the position. I think you almost have to recombine the town clerk and treasurer position. I'm, I'm becoming more convinced of that. However, with that said, then you're gonna wanna look into how to create internal controls. So that everybody, everybody, including the town clerk and the treasurer. Are covered, you know, so that there's no chance that things can go upside down because of. You know, whatever. And frankly, you know, with our current staff, I wouldn't worry. But with whoever comes in, you wanna create internal controls. And that, I will look for, I tried finding that inter- internal controls checklist the LCT puts out. Which is probably a little bit too, too thorough, but every audit firm, before they agreed to do an audit. Um, immediately assesses internal controls because it, it determines. How much they're gonna have to test. And testing, you know, the more they, the more work they have to do, the more it costs. So that is the first, I know, I was an auditor. The first thing they do is they go in and they interview all the management to see if. What internal controls are in place and are they being followed? And then they determine what financial statements they need to look at. One of the more immediate things you're gonna have to, before I, before I call it a day at the end of this month. I am gonna put together a list of some open things that. Uh, some, you're, you're gonna have to find somebody to pick up, you know, the bank reconciliations and things. And it should be the auditors. It should be our town auditors. Actually Roger told me. Roger Poitras told me that when he was an auditor, they always did the bank recs, and that would be hunky-dory. But. Yeah, and so it, and Heidi Neistrom was doing them for a time, but you know, she got, she's working in Swansea now or someplace. And, you know, and she certainly had the experience and could do them. But, and then Marie stepped in for a while, but we all have things going on in our lives where. It's just not possible right now for me to keep that up. I might do one more month. I might, you know, reconcile October at least, but. I mean, the good news is, is when I do do the bank recs, there are very few errors, so that's nice. But, you know, anyway.
So Samara, I guess our, our concern again, again, is, you know, our ability to, uh, attract and, and sustain a staff.
Right. That's, that's gonna be, and that's gotta be, you guys have to, I mean, that's the select boards. Um, you have to, you know, kinda hash it out and figure out. I mean, you might have to try. I mean, I would start by sending out an email and see if anyone's willing to step in now. And. See if that gets any bites, and if not, then I would move, you know, go from there. Plan how to, you know, uh, how you might make it work. So, I mean, and I will, I'll send you my notes, which may or may not help you, but. They're here. I typed them up. I just didn't send them yet. And.
Thank you, Samara.
Do you think the, uh, current, that Mike or Judy will be able to help us when we're doing our budget? Cause we would get some nice templates where we would have previous years and all that.
I would think so. I mean, one, most of them are available. All they have to do is give you last year's templates.
Exactly.
You know, and then you can update them. I mean, and Dave Jones did really, last year, I didn't sit in on any of the meetings. Um, it was done. You, you basically, I mean, they're pretty easy to produce, and I'll make sure they have the instructions how to do it, but.
Alright, we're gonna plan out some dates.
Dave probably has last year's, cause he, he kept them and just gave us the numbers and we input them into the final form.
Okay.
So. And then all you'll need is, you know, you'll have to, I mean, I'll. I, I would say, take a look at the reports I sent you, particularly what I did on the smaller funds. Were, um. I left out the account numbers and just printed the reports. Not on the balance sheet, but on the, um, ones that show their actual revenue and expenses. Um. I just left out the numbers, and you can see the reports are so short. I don't see why we couldn't just compile these rather than redoing everything in Excel personally. There's nothing that says you have to put together a consolidated financial statement in Vermont. You can do your financial statements however you want, as long as they're accurate, you know? So, I don't know how the original format got started. Frank Rucker, when it's somebody who has more history in the town may know. I don't, but, um. I think depending on if Dave's still doing the town report book, I think we could just basically use the reports as they come out of. Nemrick once. Any, uh, you know, once the auditors are done checking all the numbers and make sure they're okay. Or if worse comes to shove, you can export it into Excel and make it prettier that way and. But without having to retype everything and do all that stuff, which is time-consuming, so. So those are my thoughts.
Okay.
Alright.
For what it works.
Anybody? Yeah, we're, I mean. Guy?
I just wanted to add something. Uh, thanks, Samara, for your report. Um, I'm entertaining the thought of, uh, running for treasurer in, during the March meeting. Uh, as we've talked before, Samara, uh, we've spent ten years getting out of town as tight as it can be, and it is really tight. The last two years have been a little disappointing because we've had four different treasurers. I do a lot of the treasury work, I, I have an understanding of the treasury work. If we don't get a qualified person that comes up that steps up, I'm gonna throw my hat in as a treasurer, town clerk. In a hundred and eighty-one towns in the state of Vermont, the town clerk and treasurer are the same person. Uh, yes, there's an, uh, there's a, uh, an audit, uh, of SNAPU, there's some things there, but. The laws are pretty, uh, straight in Vermont. Uh, the town clerk and the treasurer can be the same person. Uh, so I, I'm just gonna leave you there. I, I don't want the town to think that they're gonna be high and dry. And my opinion is that I would stay for maybe a year, two years, whatever. In that time, we could have a real good look at some qualified people. Hopefully by then COVID will have lowered its, its impact, and maybe we can find some other people. It's difficult to get a person to work for ten hours a week. It's extremely difficult. And, uh, we're not a big town, but we still must follow the same, same rules and laws of every town in the state of Vermont.
I have, I think better. Like what you said. But I think considering everything that's been happening the last two years in the treasury department. That we should let Mike Masters go his way and appoint you as a treasurer until then. You don't wanna do that?
It's pretty close to year's end, and you're asking someone to step in to a can of worms, which is a real difficult time.
So you're saying the time is up?
Yes. Um, so I would like to see Mike, he's, he's expressed his idea that he could stay until March, and if he could, that would be great. If for some reason something goes upside down, yes, we'd have to rethink that. But the end of the year is a real busy time, and I think it's important to have some stability. At this point, you know, with Mike, and Samara has said, even though she may be in the background, she would always be a phone call away. To, to help us along, you know, if we, you know, have a hill that we can't climb. So, you know, that's what, that's what I'm thinking.
Um, I am gonna read this brief state statement here from, uh, from the auditor Frank Rucker. He said, "Under Samara's leadership and in working with her highly competent town officials, our town financial records have been and currently are. Compliant with generally, generally accepted accounting principles and clear fiscal accountability." And it goes on to say that "It is essential that the select board invest in the town's capacity to manage its fiscal responsibility." "Federal legislation will likely continue to create grant opportunities for the town to leverage, which makes the timing of this action essential." So, um, yes, uh, we appreciate your input and. We'll have to talk about this, take this on the, about cost-saving things, which I think right now, uh, my focus is the budget as we move on.
Uh, actually, be- before I, um, before I adjourn myself. I, I did wanna point out in your September financial statements, you're gonna notice that there's a fund D now. And in that fund is seventy-nine thousand dollars in ARPA money.
Yes.
So take note of that, and now you figure out how to use that, so. Um, okay, alright, I'm gonna say goodnight and.
Thank you.
Okay.
Have a good night.
Goodnight.
My name is.
I have a comment.
Yes.
I would ask that we reflect upon a process where if we are looking for an individual. And/or an accounting firm, that we do it at the same time. Because to do one and then find it's not there, it's a delay. Given the tight times, it would be nice to do both at the same time. Those who, that don't, we think, kinda work out, we can just simply let go. And those of our interests, we can then weigh the options at that time as we go along. Just as opposed to going one route, spending a month, two months, and then finding that you gotta go to process number two. And then look at people to be hired when it's even more critical, because there's others competing with us at that time, I suspect. More so than I would otherwise do. Just a thought.
Yes, I, I was thinking that maybe we need to, isn't there a job placement place in Brattleboro near Staples? That runs job fairs, that they are headhunters for positions that.
There might be. I think I heard rumors of that effect, that I'm not at exposure to it or direct statement.
Yeah, there's like a company you go for, what's it, part-time?
Yeah, it was headhunters, that's the. The bottom line, it would be great if we could find another Helen for the, the, you know, the treasurer. That would be great. And, uh, we got lucky with, with Helen, and, um, thank God, because she's doing a great job. Um, I, I don't say that that's impossible, but I, I, I'm just more concerned about the stability. Of having each person come in, because you just don't step into the treasurer's department and start doing. There's some.
So we're looking at more of a bookkeeper, accountant, than a treasurer.
Well, I don't, again, uh, uh, when we.
Looking for, that's.
When we run, when the treasurer runs for the position of treasurer. I don't think any treasurer wants to be micromanaged, because the treasurer is an elected official. If he chooses to have a bookkeeper, which would be to his benefit. But he would be able to hire and fire him, because if he doesn't meet his particular way of doing things, not the select board. Or, yes, I'm sorry. If he doesn't meet, or she doesn't meet the particular, uh, uh, qualifications that the treasurer. Who is the absolute responsible person, uh, then he has the ability to move around and do. I don't wanna see a cutoff a left hand, because I, I just don't believe in that. Um, and that would be the only way, and that's why I say as an elected official. Uh, an elected official is, can only be replaced ninety-nine percent of the time by the people who voted him in. So there's no conflict with select board, there's no nothing. You know, in a small town, this, we all get along real well, but there are some places where that doesn't, that isn't the case. We all have seen it, and we're grateful that this town is the way it is, and I'd like it to stay that way.
I, I could just finish that one, then you just.
Absolutely.
I, I offer that thought, not excluding the option of you stepping in and or running for election. I just.
But I just wanted to express my.
Entire picture, if for some reason we find ourselves coming down the route of not utilizing your capabilities and experiences. Combining that if we go that other route, that we do it in a process that gives us the greater, broadest results possible. Which gives us the greater number of choices to package things and look at it from all the perspectives. At one time as soon as possible, as opposed to postponing parts of it.
Okay, I'm, I'm dealing, I'm dealing with an area that I'm super familiar with. This is a huge thing, okay? But what I'm thinking is, we got four months until we get to town meeting, okay? So if I'm wrong and think. Sit back and think about Bruce, what is the best way to do this? And I think sliding into the town meeting is probably the way I see it's the best approach. Like given everything that you've all said in that way, so, hey, we find a bookkeeper like Helen, we're in, let's try to. But to get that. It's possible, but it's improbable. Right, around the holidays and whatever, and we have deadlines, which you all know that. So I'm thinking that if we slide our way into town meeting. You'll get the job without a, I'd be surprised. Okay, I, I know you had to contest. I mean, I have the qualifications. I'm an IRS employee for fifteen years. I take the test, you know, I pretty much know what goes on. What numbers. Trust is there, okay? And to me, that's the most important part, other than the competence. But once you get assuming, once you get into that position in, in March, you'll be in a position, you're here all the time. To man your treasury staff. That's, well, that's the reason why I suggested, because we have one phone, one mailbox, one everything. It all comes through the town clerk. And that's the small town business. But you can also think, you can also, you said over the next couple of years, you can transition. Oh, yes. Which would give you, let's put it this way, who in this building has the better technique to, to do that? Guy. Well, yeah, I've been here for eleven years, but, you know, but going forward, like I say, the most important thing is the stability. And to get through this little crisis that we're going through. Yes. We went through it, we're listeners, we, we landed on our feet, and hopefully we'll land on our feet with the treasurer, and I think we can. It's just a matter, but I don't wanna start shadow boxing, not knowing who to hit first, because everybody's got twenty-seven different ideas. And change this and change that. No, let's stay across, get through this period and then start. In other words, don't jump off the beam when it's, when it's only a puddle. That's just my opinion.
I'm gonna move this along. What I will do is I will talk with Mike Masters about our conversation tonight. To see if he's comfortable again to staying with us and working and, and until, until the, his turn.
That would be the ideal.
Ideally, that would work best for town. We can't do anything until I talk to him about that.
So after, after October thirty, it's just Judy and him. So, well, well, you gotta be careful here, but you do that, that's great. Well, and again, if no one, if we don't have any, any candidates come January. Then I will definitely throw my hat in and say, okay, I'm, I'm hoping that maybe October, November, December, we might get lucky. But if we don't, um, I will do it, but I would have to change some of my other things. Because some things are not compatible, some things you, you know, it's too much for one person. But again, you know, it's the old story, we don't have people stepping up. Right, right, you're in, and Mark, you're in the position to be able to get people to fill the responsibilities that you need to help, help with in that position. Oh, yeah, 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 that's. So anyway, we, we.
Alright, so we're gonna, we're gonna move on. Thank you very much for the very, very good discussion.
It was a great one.
Thank you for your, your input.
Well.
That's great.
Like I say, we're a small town and we get along real well, and I'd like it to stay that way.
Alright, we're gonna move on to item number five on schedule members of the public. There is no one here, so we'll now move on to item six, new business. Roll salt for winter now. Um. Guy just gave me. Uh, quotation for bulk ice control rock salt that came in this afternoon around four thirty. I know you and I spoke this morning about it. And it says, uh, "This is from American Rock Salt, delivered price-based on full circle."
Seventy-seven cents. Is that good? No, seventy-seven dollars.
What is their price on here? Okay, seventy-seven dollars per ton delivered.
That sounds like a good price, I.
I can't remember, did we do seventy-three or seventy-nine? It was in the seventies, I thought. So it's pretty much.
We talked too much.
Yep.
And, uh.
And you were satisfied with their service?
Oh, very, yes. They were so prompt. You could call that one and it would be here by the end of the day.
So I, I don't know if there's a bidding process that we have to adhere to, but.
I contacted our other salt vendors who were good over the years that we have.
Yeah, Carvo and.
And I called last Thursday after the, the next day after the meeting. And I left my information, wanted salt price and availability. And they were in contact or send an email, nothing. Hmm, so I retried a week later, got the same information. So if if they sent something today, I think.
You're gonna jump on.
Yeah.
I think in special circumstances, yeah.
Yeah, because it's already the end of October.
Right, and and uh when I asked about um doing this by bid, I was told that we didn't need to go by bid, and and I'm not sure how that works. David said, uh, we did not have to go by bid, we went with both the companies that came down. How the select board feels about this?
Well, I think he's, I I I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I just was gonna say I I I contacted two companies and uh only one responded so far.
So there you are.
My understanding, late in the season, I don't know if we should wait and.
My understanding is we've kind of met the criteria of seeking bids. You don't have to just advertise in the paper and wait for somebody to respond. You can contact the vendors if you don't like that. And if there's only one that says he's willing to do it, the decision is already basically, do we wanna accept that or not? Or which means we should proceed in that kind of.
Oh, can we do that now?
Yeah. Yeah, I heard like there's an, there's only been one bidder.
Yeah, can we line along with that?
Let's move it forward.
So that can be bid on, that can be voted on tonight.
Yeah, oh, let's move it.
All right, so I will like to make a uh motion to accept the bid from American Rock Salt uh for uh the bulk ice controlled rock salt at a cost of seventy-seven dollars per ton delivered to the town of Newthing. May I have a second? Town of Brookline.
New thing, new thing for us.
I'd like to make a, a, make a suggestion to accept the bid for seventy-seven dollars for the town of Brookline. Stand no gain second in any other discussion. Hearing that, all those in favor in in uh signing the contract for rock salt from American Rock Salt for seventy-seven dollars a ton, signify by saying aye. Aye, aye. Any opposed? None. All right, motion pass. For rock salt.
Does that have to be signed by, I don't know.
Yes, I, it will be signed by uh me.
All right, and I think, do I email it back to them?
I think so.
Okay.
Cause, yes.
I can remember the protocol.
It says, uh, email your response and then you can return it so they can place the order, so I'll have that ready.
Good, so we got sold.
We got sold. Uh, next one, vendor packet. Samara's not here. I didn't get those questions on it. Customize according to project discussion. So uh last week on the fourteenth, um, actually before that, I had sat down with Judy and she was concerned about some of the vendors and and spending a lot of time. She sent me an email, spending a lot of time um going back and trying to figure out who owes what. And uh so I said, well, I can help you out. I can send the vendor packet to the Continental Screening Glass and Larson Electric, and Terry Born had asked for for one a while ago. Um, and so I did that, and then uh I heard that the the round schoolhouse sign was ready and I just threw together another packet for that because um any purchase over, anybody who earns six hundred dollars or more has to do a W nine and so on and so forth, but. And then I talked to Stan or communicated with Stan and I also communicated with um Samara. And she said, well, maybe he doesn't need the whole packet because he didn't do any work on the building. He did it in his home, so maybe he don't need. So I was like, I'm confused. The vendor packets are are confusing to people. So I don't know how to handle it.
I think we're getting a little too much.
Well, you know what, I've been talking to David. I said, David, why don't you, you know, I I emailed David and he said, we never really didn't have any outside vendors before, so now we are. Because we're improving things. We're we're maintaining and improving.
Grants and so forth.
Yeah, there's, so that's why.
And so many ways of looking at that because it, in some ways, it it in the case of the sign on the building, it it's not a corporation. It's, we, we had asked for a sign, which is a product. If we're meant to buy heavy equipment later on, the shit, we're not gonna ask them to break down the labor to create the product and then the cost of the the materials versus labor. It's an item, it's a product, and we're paying, then pay one check. And I assume the invoice is gonna be for delivery of a, you know, whatever. And so in some sense that uh, uh, you know, the W nine probably because you're gonna have to report income or whatever. So in this case, we have an individual, it's not a corporation of any sort. He did all the work in his own home, on his own property, short of taking it down and putting it back up. So I had concerns about after the fact, which is an issue in and of itself, but I, you know, it's not, I'm not upset about that to the point where I'm angry or hateful or anything. That's that's totally inappropriate to be that way. But what I am doing, or was doing, is saying, do I really need to provide all these things? And so Samara gave a pretty good answer that I felt was reasonable and accurate. She suggested that uh if there were issues to contact the LCT. I did pose a question to the LCT, and what I noted is that uh as a provider of information to a lot of towns, it appears to me that they err on the side of safety. And they give all these requirements. They said that we do probably wanna require a um liability certificate, liability insurance certificate, or get that from the vendor who provided the sign, send the W nine. Uh, and the comment was, without having it here to read, if I can accurately recall the the verbiage, it was, it would, it would not be a bad idea to get the non-employee form filled out as well. So I can clearly see the dilemma that Judy is worth dealing with, and this is what they're kind of saying. But on the other hand, there's the possibility of not doing it. So uh to to try to be what I should be is completely compliant in terms of being understanding of the people around me and so forth. I went ahead and let the vendor for the sign know that there are gonna be things required of him. I might not be sure of the entire list and would ask that he uh, you know, contact him, you know, where to send it, if he had any question, he'd get back to us. So, you know, I I can understand the need for some things. I do feel that we, at some point, and given all the other things we had to go in an IRS supplier, uh, we probably, you know, at a more calm time, if there's ever such a thing for a select board, go over what may or may not be needed, kind of create a guide, a list, a checklist of sorts for this kind of vendor, that kind of vendor, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, it's not like.
I don't know if we're gonna actually even do that because each one becomes a little bit more individual. But I would think in this case, just for 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 the sign, I would think, I I can't imagine he would carry liability insurance if he's not a company. So I could say, uh, the W nines and um non-employee work.
Wait a minute. Doc, when you went over to Dave Celesta's house, giving insurance, that was a lot for him to prove that he had liability insurance. Is that accurate?
Correct.
And that's all he had to 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 produce, correct?
Although Samara did, well, we did have to pay taxes and she did send them a W nine and she, they sent that out. I didn't. See, this is, this is not necessarily a select chair's job. It's a treasure's job to do that.
The W nine is so you have a place to send appropriate ten ninety-nine S.
At the.
So the miscellaneous, so that you have a valid address.
But I just offered some help, Ju- with Judy out in there, and but it really isn't my, not something I should should handle. So in the case of Michael, I pulled together the, I I'm gonna do.
I took the packet, I mean, the materials still, I didn't dispose.
The W nine and, well, the power sheet, you don't wanna use it because I said I'm.
Insurance.
Sent it before the work started, but that's because I I knew that Larson hadn't started the work and Continental Screen hadn't started work either, so when I sent it to them. But I think the non-employee work contract um uh and the uh W nine is, would be sufficient in this case. Uh, if it's five hundred ninety-nine dollars or less, then we don't have to do either. But it's since, if it's gonna be more, then we have to do both, I would think. But that's all right, everybody.
And I do wanna thank you for your interacting on that. I mean, I I I felt comfortable knowing there was another set of eyes and that we were trying to work this out, and I really appreciate it.
No, no, Stanton was playing for his. I do have to make a point though. Go ahead, guys.
So you're saying the insurance, the uh.
Liability for the.
Yeah, you gotta have that, and the ten ninety-nine is definitely.
Yeah, not the insurance liability because he's not a company. He's an artist.
Well, God forbid if he was hanging up that sign on that building and he got hurt, who would be the liability?
Well, that's the thing is after the fact, it's almost vo- null and void. However, I wanna point out to Bruce, Momomani's painting company, they have returned the contract and non-employee, but still has not returned a W nine or the uh certificate of insurance from there. So they're never gonna get work for us again unless this is the case.
Right, normally that's a prerequisite before you, before you hire them, you say you need the ten ninety-nine, so forth. And if they don't give them to them, then you don't award the bid.
Or you don't pay them.
Yeah, well, no, you just don't. You give them an opportunity.
As a pilot.
What should worry about this?
Yeah, uh, some companies just automatically send him an insurance.
Well, you still have to show the town as the lost payer. You know how that.
Just put this one. He'll fill it out when he's ready, if he gets the bid, unless, the other thing left is the steeple. If he, uh, excuse me, on the inside of the church, if he gets that word, he'll have to fill it out, but why make him do it now?
Well, I'm just saying, it's it's just the fact that I did not send it out because I didn't realize it was something in my, my parameters and it didn't get done. It didn't get, nothing got sent out after the fact, so this is just a concern with 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 that.
Well, this has all come as a late, and this is the starting for the treasury department.
But we got some.
And wait a minute, and everything has been changing in as much as we're sending all this stuff out after people's work bid done. My suggestion is, like with Momomani's, good example, if he bids on the steeple, if we get, there we get that follow, which would be nice, out of the inside of the building, then at that point, say, no, we're gonna have.
The question is, how does the treasurer know that this is, needs to be sent out?
Um, okay, then we, then we have, as a select board, have to understand when we put something out for bid and we have an accepted bid, then at that point, time we.
In the bid, doesn't the bid state that an insurance disclaimer, uh disclaimer and and so forth are necessary for the bid to be accepted?
By the bill.
I.
It's in the bid.
All right, well, did, did, well.
It's not supposed to be.
Was it, was there an end of paper? Or did someone vocally or by phone or email?
No, it went out to bid. No, it went out to bid.
Okay.
It was in the paper, it went out to bid, and like, pardon, it was liability, liability insurance, I think we're, was in it.
Yeah.
So it's not all that?
Yeah, right, right in the bid.
Right in the bid.
And it can be put in the bid anytime. Again, if it, if he does either one of those packets, we put it on the bid. You have to supply whatever you wanna supply, which that makes it simple. Makes it simple. You don't have to involve the treasury department. He complies, when he submits the bid, he's got the stuff, done.
And if he doesn't have the stuff, he doesn't get the bid.
That's correct.
All right, but we still have to give the W, I'll have to write it again because we have to do it for any match purposes.
Okay.
Um.
I know we need, I I realize that we need to comply with whatever regulations, statutes apply. And I know that we're buying our insurance, our insurance from uh V L C T, I suspect, I believe.
Yes.
And they have requirements as to what we need to do in order to be run through there.
Exactly.
So I, there's a give and take involved in an overview that needs to happen.
We have to show them as a lost payer.
Yeah, there's a, it's a need to be a little more specific in certain situations. And remembering, we did not hire these people to do, although the other two contractors, the window and the the shed, provided us like with those documents early on in their project. The way the sign thing came down and fell into being, it was a totally different scenario.
And I know the electrician spent a supply of that painting work I dropped in on the phone.
Yeah, went on to be generous, but any, anytime we put out something out to bid, we just make, boom, you gotta have this, 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 and that.
Right.
Next case.
Thank you guys.
All right, we'll move on here. Um, letter to, okay, next item here, uh, letter of intent to participate in the municipal roads grant in a program of equipment purchase. Uh, all right, on October eighth, checking my email, I got an email from from Jeff Nugent. And he said that he noted that Brookline had not applied for a uh municipal road grant, grant May program. And he thought that we were missing out on a great opportunity. And and uh would I be able to uh do, you know, sign up for it before the end of the day? It had to be in by five o'clock. So we talked, so he sent me the information and I looked it over. And um I did an executive decision and I asked him, I said, does it, do I need to have three select board signatures on it? He goes, no, you're just signing a letter of intent. It's non-binding. And you don't have to accept the grant, but if you don't get it by five o'clock today, then you'll be out of it. So I talked to him, I talked to Jeff, I tried finding Mark, I talked to Mark after four o'clock, but I had already sent this in. And um uh now again, the people of Stratton, this is a piece of equipment that can be used on a weed excavator to clean out debris for culverts and dishing. Um, um, and it's a um, this particular case, it's a leaf blower attachment that can use the sediment from ditches and reduce over plugging. The estimated cost of the equipment based on the grant is seven thousand dollars, it's an eighty percent grant, six hundred dollars. We pay twelve, twenty percent. It's a non-binding. I did sign it. I did take a photograph of it and I sent it in. And um uh Mark thought that was good.
Yeah, um, I know for a fact that the town of Dumerson has this week for, they also own a turbo tractor. If they, you can have it on the back of the tractor and you can uh point this air fly into the ditch and it blows the weeds.
Is that like the one we borrowed from Newthing?
Uh.
Didn't we borrow one one time?
No, I think we need to talk about that. Definitely, but I guess all the towns are getting them now because they work so well. They're moving dents and bees.
Gotcha.
Uh, I don't know how much wind power it would take, but it has an eight inch uh.
Oh, one three.
Slower supply that you can angle. Some, some applications are in a a bucket loader on the front. They put it in the right corner. Um, you could probably put it on a receptacle hitch on a one-ton dump truck, which most towns have. Go back to the pickup truck. But again, the, the one explaining, we did talk about this, have a re-sitch, receptacle and blades. And I guess that's what Stratton is, uh, in hopes to.
Right, right. Well, you had said that it would be either that or the hay shredder, and I had already gone with this.
Yeah, I I think, I think uh the weed blower would be uh a big priority, just keep the.
Keep it cleaned out, keep it.
Keep your drainage.
Not when you don't have equipment to. It could be.
Right, well, yeah, I believe it would fit on the back of the pickup, my pickup truck.
You could do it that way as well, as well, so.
Wow, great. Sounds good to me.
All right, so we're gonna move on to the next item, uh, discuss vote to appoint Guy Tans as a temporary administrative assistant to work on the FEMA application and reports. At a normal hourly rate is half a third. Moneys are one hundred percent refundable by FEMA. Uh, the sample that I just passed out, Guy, I wanna double check, it was twenty-one seventy-five?
A hundred and twenty-one seventy-five, yes.
Yeah. Because I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. I was thinking Christmas gifts.
Make that motion and we appoint Guy Tans, town clerk, as the select board's temporary administrative assistant to work on the FEMA reporting with the declared disaster of July twenty-ninth and thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. The hourly rate is, did you say, at twenty-one dollars and seventy-five cents per hour, which is his permanent hourly pay as town clerk. May I have a second?
I'll say. Go ahead.
Bruce, Bruce started.
Doesn't matter. I was gonna refuse it.
Message made by Don Maggi. I'm gonna write it down here. Motion saved by Bruce and the uh.
O W.
Okay, any uh, any other discussion? Hearing that, all those.
Buy a little fast for me. Email me the text.
The text, absolutely. I'll email you the uh, the the term, okay. Um. What am I doing? Oh, well, for all those in favor in appointing Guy Tans as the temporary assistant, signify by saying aye. Aye, aye. Any others?
Say no if I second you. Aye.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We did have our first meeting, uh, it was uh.
Were you a liar?
Yeah, we had it here in in the office and it was.
Guy sat and I sat down last Tuesday. We went online and we put in our application. I have not gotten anything. I could check.
No, and I haven't either.
So I'm gonna tomorrow, that's why on my list is to double check all that application because we went through, we.
I've been looking for it.
And uh got everything done that I thought needed to be done, but um I'm gonna do the FEMA fall tomorrow because on my list. Okay, very good. So I have this, is it official form? I'm making it not in twenty-one, so it'd be. All right. Uh, okay. Hmm, some sort of review, all right, a request asking, okay, I got a, uh, email request asking for the Brookline Select Board to co- to collaborate on a letter regarding the flying of a Nazi flag in Townsend during the Jewish holidays earlier in October. The letter is to be sent to the Townsend Select Board. I said I would put it on the agenda, um. Some of the suggested terminology, uh, that I saw on other paperwork was that, uh, Brookline supports, uh, dark of light. It will come to me, uh, basically a very, a statement saying Brookline is, uh, is a, a sort of supports welcoming.
Do you know, do you know what the actual event was? Does anyone really know what the actual event is? I've read different, different cover stories about it, and I'm just curious, you know, because there was a thing about free speech and some people were, you know, some people had flags on their house uh, there with the Christian thing and, so you know, I'm just, you know, you have to be careful because you're stepping on free speech and it, this was a Townsend event, and I'm just wondering, you know, should the town of Brookline weigh in on the Townsend's thing, I I don't know.
I, I am gonna say that I don't think addressing the flag as free speech is something that I wanted to do, however, I do want to say that we look for tech communities in our valley to be welcoming and 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 non-biased. No, Bruce.
Forget it, that's fine with me, stay out of it, this is politics.
Exactly.
We have no business, look, I hate, let me, watch my word of church. I go by that building every something when I go to church or when I'm working up at the church, and I look at, and it's her right to do whatever she pleases.
Correct.
I hate it.
Yeah.
I don't like it, I don't agree with it, I wouldn't do with it, but this is not, in my estimation, something that Town Select Board should keep, should weigh in on, that's my opinion, I know, I'd love to, I'm not gonna say not to.
Yeah, I, I, I feel the same way, it's just not, you know, it's not town business.
That's what I feel. We don't have to deal with somebody else.
Not.
If at the select, if at the town meeting, someone brings it up in it as an article later on, the things that we could, then the town should have the opportunity to say that, but for a select board, and again, this is just my opinion, to weigh in on something that's a political football, I think is some, a little precarious.
We don't need it, we don't have enough to do, we don't need to be.
You know, you're damned if you do, damned if you don't.
I must say we should ignore something like this, but something wasn't done to another person of Brookline.
Yeah.
So as far as I'm concerned, we should leave it to hell or all. I don't understand you feel about.
Uh, I, if, if, uh, I, I am aware of the, that property and the ownership of that this would happen uh, isn't a total surprise. Not that particular issue, but any other issue.
Yeah.
That, because the other signs, I think, are an indication, there, there's a, a willingness to exercise free speech.
Yeah.
Uh, I, if we are to do anything, I would simply, I wouldn't mind making a statement to the effect that Brookline believes in the, uh, believes in a welcoming community, that's the rights, uh, to free, exercise freedoms, uh, with the, and not, does not condone, uh, racial, religious, or any other biases, or something general like that, without really taking a stand on this particular issue.
Exactly, but we, I feel this, Brookline Select, we have, the select board has made a statement when asked for something with New Thing, and it was very gentle, I'm saying, we believe in a welcoming community, uh.
Right, with the Black Lives Matter, uh, thing back in, uh, in New Thing, yes.
But we can do something specific.
Correct.
Right.
That's, I'm not asking, I, yeah, I think we're on the same page.
Yes, nothing specific.
Because.
My first thought was, that's the town of Townsend, I don't want to be viewed as a Brookline citizen.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Commenting on what Townsend should be doing.
You know.
And so the, the most logical thing would, to me, would seem since, you know, I think most people in the town of Brookline are welcoming of citizens, regardless of what their religious ability affiliations are, skin color, gender.
Yeah.
All of those aspects upon which some people in society, uh, uh, exercise bias. And 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 I think if we just keep it as general as that, I think that makes a statement about the, about us as a town and the people that we represent, and that we're proud to be able to say that. The thing that I found interesting was, I believe at that meeting, the towns of Dumerson, Wordsboro, Jamaica, New Thing, and maybe one other were quoted as already making some kind of statement. From the politics side of it, I think it, it would not hurt us to make a very general.
A vague.
You're saying that they all did.
But by the same token, I think.
I'm not alleging what they did at all, all I'm clear, clarifying is that, that Mrs. Kessler, who did the speaking to the Townsend Select Board, made that statement, I assume it's accurate, it may or may not. But it would seem to me.
But she said it was, she said it was political.
No, I'm not saying that.
I'm sorry, misunderstanding.
Yeah, I'm not introducing polit- politics in this, any, when I'm saying political, I, I guess what I should say is
No, no, I'm sorry.
the image that this town projects, you can say nothing, or you can say something very general and not get into the decision or discussion about that Nazi flag on that property.
I just think that you should have a full select board make that decision.
Well, I don't, I don't know, if there, if there are four people and a vote is taken, you'll know whether or not there's a majority, whether we respect.
Okay, I'm, I'm just giving everybody a chance to weigh in.
We can make it later, but it's on the agenda for city, just now, if you want to place for the down on the agenda, we could do that.
All right, so let's, let's temporarily table this at this time.
Okay.
All right, um, using at the Brookline Meeting House at November sixth discussion, um, so, uh, just briefly, this is, an interesting call came in, this one from Peter Sears, a gentleman with the bridge accident attended to our open house this summer, we reached out to Wendy Redlinger about getting some musical instruments into the Brookline Meeting House to hear the acoustics of the building, and she was very interested in the project. She would like to bring a few musicians out to the building on November sixth to tune up and to play a bit. I just received their contact information and will even as I learn more, Peter said she was interested in our organ, and so I forwarded the research done by Ned Phoenix, she has great interest in public music and period instruments, so, um, well, well, I don't believe this is something that we, we're talking about opening to the public because of the deficiencies in our ADA and and the liability insurance and that, I think, just like an open house having, this happening is a step forward and not a step backwards, I would like to support this, but we're only going through, we have a basic opinion on Bruce.
I've done a lot of work on this in the last two weeks. Uh, and acoustically, we don't have it there, but I, like I said, thought a lot about it, I've done a lot of work. I'll try and make as concise as possible, and I don't want to dissuade the people from coming, I want them to be there, I'd like to talk to them about it. And I, the last thing I want them to have happen is to come there and say, oh, no, no, let us know in a couple years, we need to do a little bit better with the building.
They're just coming to tune up, they're not coming to play.
I know that, but they have a reason for being there, they're doing it, if I understand correctly, to see if it's amenable to them playing there. No, then what, why are they coming to tune up?
She's interested in, oh, she's, well, I think you.
Okay.
Go ahead, I'll let you go ahead.
No, I'll, I'll, I'll let you, I'll explain what she's.
Pretty much, somebody came to the open house twice, and they talked about, and I guess, I guess it may have been one of the times when the organ was being played.
Yeah, yeah.
And so I know somebody who knows something, who might, also, like, it's a beautiful room, so, you know, let,
Yeah, I wonder about that.
So let's, could we, you know, so I think it was just pretty much, let's come in.
Okay, I'm not into dissuading them from doing anything like that, what I'm into preventing from happening is if we have a major event and it acoustically doesn't work and driving people out of the voice.
We're not having a major event, this is just.
No, I mean now, I didn't mean in, in the near future, okay, I took it, I went and ran with it, you know that, Stan knows that.
I need to.
Because this is closer to me than anything else that we haven't spoken about in this room. And I have made a number of calls and phone calls, and what I did was, is I immediately went in and checked whether back in early twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, when, when I went to one of the seminars, I learned about uh, that you could get an acquisition to come and take a look at the building. There, it was done at some building in Braderville, I didn't follow it up, it was one of those future things because we weren't quite ready for that, okay, so, well, this timeline, I understand, Stan kind of knows, I just spoke to him a little bit about it. And what came up was Braderville Music Center. And it turns, it turns out that they, I think, bought a building or got a building and expanded it and made it acoustically correct, and basically what they did was they constructed an addition or a building over on this now, uh, Blanche Molesway, which is past the Greenery Bridge, and, um, it's in, everybody could take a look at it tomorrow or whatever, Braderville Music Center, what they did to this building to make it acoustically correct. So, okay, and then I called, and found out their hours, and a nice lady said, you know, if you want to take a tour, uh, I'd love to show you a short tour, right, Stan's great idea, then I was discussing with Stan a little bit last weekend, and Stan came up with a great idea that I should consult the meeting house, the church committee members, to see if they'd be interested in going with me if I go and do this, great idea, we'll definitely entertain that. But I took it another step further, I called the company, acoustic, uh, excuse me, I don't know. They're out of Cambridge, Mass, I got a phone call from back from a very nice guy, uh, that Liz and Lyden, and he made a number of recommendations, uh, of some of which were to, uh, yeah, I'm not gonna go over more, more of this. He made a lot of suggestions that I'm entertained at this point, uh, as to helping us make this building usable for use.
All right, but this is just the first step, so you're okay with the first step?
Absolutely, I see, see them.
I'm in favor of the first step, I mean, and maybe they just need a place to practice, who knows? But it doesn't, if they're not committed to anything, they're not as much as committing to, they want to go in there and see what it sounds like, uncomfortable with that.
Right. Right.
I would like to clarify something, the concept of some issues that they're just talking about.
Did this, this was true, Stan?
Well, I think it's a misunderstanding, I'm in favor at some point of having this kind of thing done. But right now, we don't have the time, the money, there are other things that need to come first, and and we need to have a consensus of what the order is,
Yeah.
and this may or may not fit into it anywhere in the near future, it needs to be done with and at appropriate time, and so, uh, I, I don't, you know, I, that's just where I come from, I, I'm not supporting it in terms of it being now done, yesterday, tomorrow. What, it, it's gonna be looked at in perspective with everything else there.
Well, what I thought of Stan was, uh, your suggestion was great, and I think I'm gonna go, go to this on the sixth and talk to Leanne about it a little bit, see how that goes, and if they want to table it for now, fine, I might go over there on my own. I think your, your, your suggestion was great, including them, since I was doing it in relation to the, to the church committee, to the church. So if they don't want to do it, fine, I'll still, I'm still gonna go down there and look at the building, just my own biking giggles.
What do you think about the number six, having the musicians come in to do practice rehearsal?
I agree with whatever they, you know, I don't see any, it's not gonna hurt the, well, I, I will say that temperatures are dropping, and that building is cold in the summer, so I would always, frankly, if it, if I were to interact with them, I'd say, could they do it next summer early when it's more to their liking? I don't know what kind of instruments they're gonna use, their hands might be cold, their lips might be cold, might be metal on lips, you know, to me, it doesn't, this doesn't look like it.
Harpsichord.
A lot of it was a.
Harpsichord.
I don't know.
But it's hair lips, nearfing board.
I'm gonna let them, I'm gonna let them know that, that, you know, no problem, that they want to go in, they just dress appropriately.
I just wanna know.
It's, it's an opportunity to bring in friends to that building in the future.
Somebody, yeah, right.
That's true, and I, I would just like to be there when they're there, that's all I'm asking, and I'll do my personal sub-person.
All right, excellent, all right, next thing, we'll go to, um, old business, uh, job, uh, review, job description from road supervisor. Now, Stan, you sent me a, you sent in the updates, you and David had worked on it, did you say we should table this one more time, did you suggest?
I, I believe I, 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 I did, because, you know, it's like most everything that else that came in, it's coming in today, time schedules and performance and the other impin- impinging factors on our lives, and so the choice was that I wait until a week or if I'm in the mood, and I've got a, a, you know, incentive to try to get to the meeting tonight, but there's many things done that I promised, irrespective what we get to review them, I've got no problem, and if no one else has a problem just putting out for the next meeting, that's fine, me personally.
Okay, we are at ten o'clock already, and you're okay.
Yeah, I, I, I feel the same way. Never enough time to prepare for anything.
Mark to hire somebody.
You know, I can interject one other thing, I know David obviously did some work on it, I did some work on it. Uh, I sent everyone a PDF copy of the modified version, it showed you those things that David did, those things that I did. And there may be other, other fat thoughts to other people here now, please, this isn't, and I'm not presenting this as a final version, but simply ask
Yeah.
to be worked on, again, if needed.
All right, I am tabling this to the next meeting, and by then we should all have a chance to look over it and find out which, which format we'll, we'll do, and I think that will be fun, all right, very good. These pages. Okay. Discuss review of municipal loan fund for equipment purchase, so Stan sent out a summary for the municipal loan fund purchase information here, and I thought this was pretty straightforward, the interesting thing here though is, is we are gonna go for a loan, um, uh, the date has passed us for the October fifteenth, application deadline. But there's an application for April fifteenth, in which case the approval would be, uh, in June.
Can I come later in June third? Can I cover, I sent Stan.
Did you see my emails?
I did. So no way Jose, for now?
I haven't asked him because, to be honest with you.
You know me, I was letting things on yesterday.
One time I looked at the minutes, that, that whole thing seemed to be in their timeframe. I didn't go back and look through the minutes, if you want me to ask that, I'd be happy to, I suspect you're gonna say no.
Okay, because you stated in that letter that they make a conclusion by the end of the year.
Correct.
So, you know, maybe I'm putting the cart before the horse because we don't have anything yet, and it's kind of pushing the issue, but that's all for you, all the discussion.
Well, that's, you're, 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 you're talking about, apparently within the next thirty days, having a piece of equipment selected.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I don't even think from our perspective, that's realistic, you know, we've got, we probably want to meet time and, and schedule for next spring would seem to be,
Okay. I want to see.
we can prepare town budget, taking it into effect, nobody's hearing about it, and there are a lot of other things that, and, and look, literally looking at, that we want that model. We want that number, there are a number of decisions that need to be made, which in thirty days with two meetings packed in between now and that, doesn't seem like a real thing, doesn't seem like a realistic thing as a concern.
Okay, Mark wants to connect.
The difference also, the big question is, how much is available on this loan, so we know what we're shopping?
Yeah, what size of love are you looking at, right, that's right.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's, there's all different prices out there, so then you need to know.
Exactly.
What parameter to.
This is a hundred and ten dollars, and we had to figure to come up with the difference between that and the sale price.
Right.
If the equipment costs a hundred and ten, we're gonna pay twenty, twenty five percent of the hundred and ten and no financing.
Could I do the eighty percent, would I do eighty percent?
No, it's twenty-five, seventy-five.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So a hundred and ten thousand is the cap, though, Mark, so if you right, if it's a hundred and forty thousand dollars, we're gonna have to come up with the difference between a hundred and ten and the forty, hundred and forty, plus the twenty-five percent.
Right, so I think this is information that we need to have when we sit down and brainstorm on the actual equipment and, and budgeting
And the budget.
process, but, um, I, I thought, well, well set up, and I have also the initial law information that you sent to us, so it's something just to to, to be aware of, all right, and, and now we have a deadline that we can look at the, how, how hard is the application, if we could get a printout of what the.
It looks pretty easy.
Yeah, it's pretty simple.
Before, previously.
Oh, okay, that's in here, okay.
Yep, it's in the, it's in the applications there.
Yeah, okay, that's this one.
One, one of the things that, uh, we don't know is that, you know, while we kind of do it, it looks like we might have to provide them with a financial statement for the town, which we could print out from HEBOK or whatever.
Right.
Yeah, that's a standard O.
Yeah, yeah, uh, whatever, they want an auditor's, a town auditor's statement, it seems to me like they're pretty
S O P.
Right.
fair in terms of not being overly restrictive in requirements, not, not trying to make things difficult as opposed to trying to facilitate that.
Okay, all right, so we'll move on, uh, we have that information and, uh, we, we, we can session it another time, but, uh, loan. Okay, moving on. Make sure, I'm beginning to kind of discuss that description down. Make sure anybody we can discuss that description down. National opioid settlement discussion from the Attorney General Office of the State of Vermont. We got that last month and it was too late to actually have any time to discuss it. Does anybody have an opinion as far as next steps and if we wish to become a part of it?
Well, from what I saw, the more people that, that are apply for it, the chances of the state getting more money. But I don't see, when I read my letter, it didn't seem that it really had anything to do with the town of Brookline per se. I'm not so sure that the town would, and again, I read it fast, would reap any rewards from it. But that's, you know, we still have, the window of opportunity is still open to reply to it. So, it would be something to really look at hard, but from my initial looking, it didn't seem to affect much of the town of Brookline.
That, that's, that's how I saw it too, but it was.
Yeah, the other, the only thing, the only reason I brought it up is that A, it's a source of money. B, which needs to, I think, happen before any real discussion about occurs, is find out what triggers an application to be accepted. What paperwork, reporting we need to get into in order to get the money, which may answer the question of are we qualified in terms of any opioid addiction we might have in town that we may or may not be aware of? And whether or not that would trigger societal mechanism in that program that says, oh, you're entitled to five thousand dollars. Next question is, are required to spend that in any particular fashion? So, I look at it as a source of money. I think, I think one of us or some of us, I'll look at what the specifics are and then at a meeting in the future, decide to either can it or pursue.
Stan, I'd be glad to sit down with you and talk about this. Guy, I, I don't remember if there was a, when they said this needed to be in line. January.
Uh, January, yes. Yeah, it is quite a, quite a window of opportunity.
All right, so Stan, if you allow, I'm gonna put it down at some point between now and Christmas.
Yeah.
You and I will wait together.
I just didn't want to, to let a gift horse.
Oh, yeah, no.
You know.
But by the same token, with this incredible infusion of money that we're getting from, from everywhere, there's more things cropping up now than ever cropped up before. And you wonder if it really impacts you or not. And then what if you do, what do you have to give in return?
Exactly, so what is the real, what's the real?
Some of our views.
Yeah.
All right, very good, so we will look into that. All right, item D, discuss and appoint one additional member to the Regional Emergency Management Committee. Brookline has two voting members, the local EMD Director, Desne, which is me, and a representative of the local emergency service community to be appointed by your executive or legislative branch. November sixteenth is this first meeting. There are four meetings a year. Is there anyone who's interested in attending these webinar meetings with me? We are all part of the emergency, regional emergency management committee. And if not, I was gonna ask one. If he would work with me, attend a meeting online and because when there's another emergency storm,
Yeah.
it's, Mark's the one who we have to turn to because.
When is the seminar?
Hmm?
When is the webinar?
It's November sixteenth.
What day is that on?
It's a Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Because the office would be available on one of these.
It's not, uh, we could come here and we could Skype, we'll Skype, Zoom in on their meeting.
Okay.
We could sit together.
Have anything home or not.
Right. Would you be interested in meeting?
You could watch it right through there, right?
Yeah, right through there.
Yeah, pretty.
Yeah, do it right here.
At least as one of us.
Use a town Zoom account.
I thought you, you're the one that knows what happens when it road emergency, that's who we look to, so.
So, you can Zoom it on that.
Yeah, we could watch it right here, yeah.
Yeah, you can run it through here.
Okay, yeah, I'd do it with you.
Yes. All right, so I'm gonna contact them and give them our mutual information and that, that makes me quite happy.
Bring your own coffee and doughnuts. She doesn't bring you the doughnut.
Okay.
Oh, my popcorn.
Eight o'clock in the morning.
All right, very good. All right, um, the last, the last thing under old business is the placement of the handicap sign that I wanted to talk, talk to you all about as far as here in town. Now, we looked outside here and I talked with Mark and I talked with Gwen and, 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 what's his name over there? Guy, earlier today, before the light went away. But realized if anything placed over here, we have a snow load that comes off the roof, right past the ramp. So, again, probably the best place would be perpendicular to where Guy parks his car.
That's fine. Where do you?
This is the building.
So, yeah, this is the building, here's the flagpole, here's where Guy parks. If we put the sign here and then here's the steps to go into the building and here's the ramp. So, if we, they put the sign here, it's not, if people can park, like we normally park back here. And this is where Guy's parked. So, something where I was showing you here, there's, there's probably a big brush here, so. Is that all right?
I think so.
And it pretty much, we're just gonna spray paint a couple of snot lines.
Yeah.
Not everybody comes in a wheelchair that has a handicap.
Just the town clerk. It's gonna be covered anywhere.
Yes, but the sign will be above the ground, so that's, and you'll have.
This is your contribution.
And you can work it out with him with this school.
Oh, right now. Oh, I will, I, I've already got approval where they.
Okay.
I, in fact, I took.
You got the map, Mark?
Mark, I did talk to you about that, didn't I?
No, I'll have to get a copy of the map there.
Mark?
No, I'm joking, yeah.
Mark, did I mention to you about where they want, where they agreed to at that school?
I got a general idea, but I, I need to clarify for.
Here's the front of the, of the old building. Go up to the stairs, go up to the building. You know where they, where they planted all the grass in the front there?
Yeah.
Just to the right of the steps, right there. Just before you walk it up to the zone.
So, if, if this is where the little hoopla is and here's your side walk into the building, you're saying to put it here?
Correct.
Okay.
Right where the plants are.
Okay. I'll show you my map later.
And it's on Googler.
Towns are important, guys, hands up.
Uh, just a, a quick reminder that the real estate market is still robust and it's, it's starting to peter out, but still been very busy. And we did get, I did get a notification in regards to the redistricting of the town of Brookline with the legislative district that I'm just looking at right now. And if necessary, we'll call a board of civil authority meeting. Other than that, I don't see anything important. I did send you a dog report. We have dogs registered. I think it's still twenty, twenty-five that still need to be looked at. We've been very lenient this year. We've given no penalties, no fines because of the COVID. But the reality of this, rabies are a very serious thing and people need to take that very seriously, their animal. So, those who haven't come in yet, please, please come in so we have you on record.
Tell them what we had in our front yard.
Oh, we had a bobcat in our front yard over in, I think, nine fifty-six.
You know, right, you know, right out of the living room window, that little stone wall.
Twenty feet from the house.
Right, not even. I don't even think it was fifteen feet. Come wa, walk behind the stone wall, walk in front of the house and Guy opened the door to get out of here.
Oh, that's.
Well, I first tried, they're pretty common, they're work. They're pretty common, some work cats.
But anyway, so that is pretty much where we are.
Yeah, the local control officer for. Anything else, guys?
Oh, that's it.
Select work, we sure. I spoke with Edith Larson of Larson Electric. He'll be working here at Town Hall on Wednesday the seventeenth. He'll come in at eight thirty. He'll call me and I'll come down and unlock the building. I, I will point out the additional work that was beyond what we had on our scope. So, if he has to, if he, if he decides to charge us for the extra wiring, the mess, mess damage in that corner, then I'll say, you know, send us a twenty dollar, whatever the billing is for that separate is beyond the cost of that, what was approved by the select work. Okay, all right, ARPA. I sent you all just a brief summary of the most recent ARPA webinar I went to listening. And, and again, today, the governor sent out a, the governor made a request recently. Now, some of this money has been released for people to get, whether renterization and such, that the state ARPA money is being spent on. So, again, we're still, we're still in a holding pattern. The idea is continuing to think big. And I did have one question that I sent in and they're gonna research it a little bit. My question is, when I said, that I typed in and they said they had to research it, can local ARPA funds be used to provide grants to residents to subsidize the expenses that they occur on personal properties such as driveways, culverts, debris cleaning and primary home flood damage that was not covered by their homeowners insurance? I don't know. So, we're gonna, FEMA doesn't cover it, but, but. So, can we use some ARPA money to directly benefit some of our people in town? And they're gonna find out. So, let's let us know. Just, just to start, we have to start making a list of, of where you think appropriately, appropriately we can spend our money.
Did you, there was a mention about ADA and septic in that, in that.
Yes, there, there.
Does that mean that there might be consideration? Maybe we could do that for the church?
Yes, and that's why I put that, that's why I put on here, because that's something that might be for church because they've been doing ADA enhancements. But the septic system, I checked with Carrie Horn, she said the septic over there is fine.
It's a steel tank.
But it's a steel tank, but it's fine for, you know, who uses it, anyways.
Well, wait a minute. But if we can get the money to put in a concrete tank, wouldn't that be a little bit more?
True, but that's something that, that.
Plus, if anybody ever drives over that steel tank, guess what? The steel's over. I would suggest that if we can get the money, we're gonna have to be looking for. In that letter, there was also explanation about combining towns for one thing that's out of the town. And what I'm getting at is if we can use this money for things that in town, we should consider that.
Right, if we can use it for money in town versus saying we're gonna give it to Greece College or give it to Nebraska. That's why I asked about.
I think Greece College is a better idea.
So, we'll find out. The other thing I was interested in is that, you know, New Fane has got their planning commission working on the ARPA funding and I think that's something that I'm gonna ask our planning commission to get more involved in because it's really just, I'm gonna use the word overwhelming.
I'm seeing, I can see.
Well, that whole loan is just so vague right now. It's, it's really difficult to make any.
Because, you know, there's no, they, they took away the October thirty-first deadline to do original plan. You know, we're still like a little bit slipping our wheels.
Katie said, Katie said.
She ran.
Yeah, no, there's.
The list. You know, put the money in the bank.
She was the one that ran this workshop.
Uh-huh.
All right, moving on. Uh, FEMA, well, we did the assistant, assistance. Mark. Are we, are, are, will we have all the billing except for the paving on repairs for cutting out? Or everything else is done as far as you're concerned?
We're close.
Close, okay. So, you still need to identify whenever you put in what was what. And then at some point, Guy and I will sit down and we'll dissect this a little bit more details. We might need you to help us with that at some point. But we should do an RFP for the paving. Would you suggest that we put it out for public? How, how much? What, what do you think we're looking at footage wise?
Footage wise, just, I didn't multiply the square feet. I measured the lengths and widths.
Okay.
To put in as an RFP. And then there's some jagged edges that will probably be cut two feet wide, two, two correct, and then length. Archie, somewhere in twenty thousand dollars or blacktop.
Some blacktop care, so. All right, so we.
Because there's prep and there's the prep to do before we pave, like dig back out where we made it passable. And then they put in fresh gravel. Needs to be compacted and maybe left for a while before paved on. And what he mentioned last night, it was tough with one town. And there's two ways. You can either go direct with Dave and company and they do it all, or you put it out for a contract that would come in and prep it. And then they hire whoever to do that paving. So, he said there's two ways you can do that.
All right, so what I'm gonna suggest is, I'm gonna probably give you a call and sit down again and go over this, but does, we do need to do some kind of RFP for, we don't wanna, we, we want that to be included in monies that, that, that paving will cover.
All right, and now, and again, I've talked with Eric and then do you, we realize that we're at the end of the season. If our weather changes, the actual job may not take place this year. And if it takes place, if we word it so that there's a deadline, I'm not sure exactly when the paving season would open back up. But it would allow, if we do get there, we'll have people looking for work for next.
Well, we have to see what FEMA, what FEMA says about that, I guess.
Right, so I'm gonna have to email.
The window of after the, for the deadline, we need to know how far out we can use repairs.
All right, so I'm gonna email the woman from FEMA and, she gave that speech. And I'll find out a little bit more about that and the deadline for actually getting the paving based upon the season that paving has gone on. All right, that's good. And what else?
What you, oh, good.
Okay, Wyndham Regional Farmers Meeting, nine AM on Wednesday, October twenty-seventh at the Dover Town Garage. And I, and I spoke to Jeff Nugent when we were dealing with the October eighth thing. And he says, you know, it's something that you should go to and, and, you know, and I, I thought, all right, I can certainly go there and they're gonna have it in the garage, it will be open. He said there's gonna be donuts, so.
Oh, that's a comment.
Coffee. So, I guess Mark, if you wanted to go and, uh, he said, yes, so I'm gonna bring some. So, we're gonna go, go to the farmers' meeting on the twenty-seventh. So, that's good. The budget, uh, budget eating schedule. What do you want to do? Yes, Bruce. Cause we have a meeting November third.
And we're talking, yeah, we're talking with this without the David here, but we're gonna set aside a whole, we gotta set aside a whole, correct?
Yeah, I think that'd be, be an extra meeting.
Yeah, do we wanna do this at a night or a weekend? Man, like we used to do it at night. We used to do it as another select work meeting.
Right.
Uh, just, just for a budget meeting.
Saturday morning would be nice. Ten o'clock Saturday morning, no? Oh, okay. Well, in the winter, there's not much going but snow.
Well, we got November. We, we gotta get this going here, so I'm not gonna, I don't wanna wait. We could do the first meeting, we could do a first meeting at evening. And I was thinking of saying November tenth is another Wednesday. It would mean three week means in a row, the tenth, the third, the tenth and seventeenth.
Oh, it's, you gotta do it sometimes.
So, have our first meeting on the tenth. Could you check this, Guy, I see there's another planning meeting on that day, maybe?
On what day?
It's November tenth.
Uh, nothing's going to count.
Okay.
Will we have everything together, books?
If, if not, then we'll, I will let you know, but I, I, I'm gonna ask for those, those, whatever we need to go.
We got a lot to hammer out with that.
All right.
We got percentages of the real excellent.
The planning commission is usually on Thursdays and the democratic meeting is usually on Tuesdays and Wednesday select board meeting, so we're in relatively good shape right now.
Six seventy, that's still, let's keep it that way, six thirty on October twenty. And we're writing in for the tenth, yes, okay.
Uh, November tenth?
Yes, a meeting for the tenth, budget meeting, select board.
Six thirty?
Yes, sir. All right, last but not least, um.
Six and seven? Oh, yes.
Yes, six, it was, oh, six.
The ARPA workshop.
Okay, ARPA, okay. October twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, and it was mentioned at the ARPA meeting yesterday. There's a, a placemaking workshop that I want to attend. Again, it's virtual, so it's not so bad, but it's two hours each morning. And it's looking at how we can use improved public space by using some of our ARPA money. And I was thinking at our field, we, I saw the sign was taken down, the, the gates are fixed. The, the baseball sign was taken down and put in storage.
Oh, they fixed the front gate.
Stan, I apologize, I didn't tell you that there was this very moment. I went and I replaced the. I went and I replaced the split rail post post, and it went really good, it's easy digging. Uh, and then I walked across to just take a look at what I was seeing, and I thought, oh, that looks easier than I thought, this is a smaller than I thought. So I backed right in, backed right up with my trailer right to it, I drove to the knot beat down. And I thought, well, if I can just wiggle it and lift it up and tip it down on the trailer, I can take it to the, well, it had cement uh, holding around it, so I dug, I dug down to the cement. One of them freed up from the cement and I just left, the other side wiggled a little bit, but wouldn't give up. And in the process, on the back, the sign is a aluminum. It it's a pre-made uh aluminum with print for the scoreboard and everything. The wood on the back of that was rotted and it was starting to come apart. I had a drill with me, so I completely dismantled, put it on the trailer carefully, and I've got it in the in the garage. All the pieces are there, can be reassembled with new wood, if ever needed to be.
Okay.
Thank you.
But it, it went easy with the with the
Thank you.
You're the man, my feelings are not hurt.
I was just, I just want you to, the outside, I didn't call you, Twitter, uh, I I know you were there, if I needed you, and that's all I need to know, yeah.
Alright, so so I just thought, this participants of the workshop will be eligible to apply for one of six quarter thousand dollar grants. So if I can get a quarter thousand dollar grant to to fix up something around by going to a meeting, then that's, you know.
Yeah.
Alright, so that was the uh, that was number six and number seven.
Alright.
Um, you know, Marjorie Ray is our is our representative to DB Fiber, uh, the CUD. And according to the workshop I went to, it's very good that Brooklyn did sign up for it because it's really going to be a good impact. But there's another gentleman that moved into town who was contacting Marjorie and um, who was interested in being an alternate. And his name is Donald DeMayne, D E F, D, D E M A I N E, a new resident in town. Um, so he's going to be attending uh, a meeting, and if he likes it, he's gonna, I'm gonna, he's gonna ask for an appointment to the committee. So I just wanted to let you know, what was his name, Robert?
Donald.
Donald.
D E M A I N E.
Where does he, uh, where did he move to, do you know?
I don't know, I I looked him up, it looked like it was Connecticut information, but spell my name, please. D E M A I N E. So, um
Well, I just wonder if he's a renter or a property owner.
I don't know. So I just wanted to let you know about that as well. Okay, next, Bruce, Commissioners, uh, for building report?
Okay.
Okay, um
Time's up.
You know
This is not fair, okay, here we go. Alright, I'll start with the town office, Stan and I met with Scott uh back when. And we had an exchange between the, this building and the and the church.
Is that St. Thursday, or?
Uh, yeah, something like that, and well, we weren't entirely, really ecstatic about it, for sure. We came up with the building and they offered to fill a hole that was on the end of the house, on the end of the building that that had, that had a mouse hole, that kind of hole, you said. Um, I'm not gonna get too long-winded on the on the church part, we can talk about that later. But I also had them, had him look at the church and we kind of got rid of bats and steeple's not sealed, and we can talk about that at another time. Um, and he said he would send me a quote and he hasn't done it yet. Standing out a little bit, I don't wanna speak for you, Stan, you cut me off. A little bit dis, a little bit dismayed that he didn't, that he was a little more aggressive with our scene here as far as helping us to tie tighten up a little bit, so we're gonna just have to do it our own at this point. And if you want, and it led to us thinking that the kind of ideas that he had or quote for the church, whether he was, whether we think of he would be the right person to do that work, we were discussing that as well, correct, Stan? Okay, so I'm not gonna get into that right now, we'll do that at another time. Um, now, I've been excuse me, cause you got three buildings, you gotta think of them. Uh, I would still like to do the work, even I think maybe November, a bit more user time, once we get ourselves a little better organized, maybe. I don't think it's any any big of a um, other than the making of doors, which is not the first thing I could do. But we could take them off and maybe get a carpet and fix it, but a work me some Saturday morning, maybe November before the weather gets pretty prohibited. We still gotta, could five, six weeks before, we could still worry about whether we're gonna have to sell our cars to cold weather, I see.
I'll call you Martin, I'll call him to him next week, but
Well, I, she's, and
we can round circles all over my house, that's ladybugs, it's gonna be seventy degrees tomorrow, we'll see, anyway, um I um sent in the application for, to make us a supplier to, to make us so that we can get code on code to service our gas boilers.
Okay.
I'm waiting, I sent the, I, by email, the other application last Thursday or Friday to Stephanie at um, at Susie's. Then to fill out their portion, in which case that would begin the step to then code on code taking over the gas. So I'm, on that, I'm waiting with Stephanie until the end of the week, which is in two days. And if I don't hear from her, then I, cause you promised you'd get it right back to me, Olivia promised four times she would give me the consumption and so I'm gonna stay right on it because um, the optimum thing is getting that, they don't want to have any gas, et cetera, but I want the the boiler to be serviced, okay, so I've got that straightened out, that's basically it with that building. Um, oh, and one, one, I think, final thing is I gave a copy of the lease to Susie's to stand to look at what that is as uh, when he wants to, and I think we should keep in mind that we're gonna be doing the budget. We're gonna full tail, bulging through up into Thanksgiving. Susie Kudermarsch has to give us a notice by the end of December, a six month notice, but she's gonna re 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 up the um the uh, the lease for like three years.
She's planning on not returning yet.
Right, she has to tell us. But in this much of saying that, I think it would be a really good idea, she's got five, five figures, that's somewhere in the first part of December, then before, before Christmas, submit to her
A letter.
the the lease. A new lease, and by giving her the new lease, if she rejects it, we we get into that right now, because if by habit stand, she doesn't wanna continue, which I don't think is gonna happen. We have to figure out in our budget, how to heat that building, so that's always, on the back, when you and I have been to this before. I don't see this to be a major thing, Stan, it was already made with idea of of an addition to the lease about about previous, previous work done by the lessee that would make us responsible for her money back if she left. I think that's a good idea, we can get that involved in the lease and any other little changes, but you and I went over that lease last time really thoroughly, um
I could try to find it and send you each a copy so that you can print, oh, can you send it then to Stan, so he has it on?
I think so.
Oh, got it, alright, alright.
I have the lease, she's got, got the lease, so I would say, oh, a couple of hour meeting somewhere early in December, get it straightened we got December third, I would like to see us submit it to her before Christmas. So if we could get it approved somewhere around, I'm looking at November, excuse me. If we could do it somewhere around there, we got a meeting there, if we could find, have it resolved, what we're gonna do for a lease by the fifteenth, then we can approve it at a select board meeting and send it out to her, and what happened two leases ago, I can't stand this, then uh, the previous lessee, Sunday when he gave everything, kept us waiting for quite a period of time on responding to whether she was gonna do, whether she was gonna accept this lease or not. So, um, I think that the second time, this last time, we we put a deadline out. And we'll do that again, but if we give it to her on the, what did I say, the fifteenth, the fifteenth, and give her to the fifteenth of January to respond to us, if she says, well, forget it, I'm pulling out, we're still, we're still, before the auditors get our 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 budget, we can make, we can make the appropriate changes to add to the budget, if we have to heat the building or not.
Okay, good, good point.
Okay, so I just, I think I'm done. Yeah, oh, yes.
Two, two comments? Just for clarification, the problem in this building is that in that corner, there there appears to be a hole that goes down
Yes.
uh, and comes out about the top of landing here, it looks like it ate through the plastic, and and there there's a hole, so if the board doesn't mind spending between fourteen and sixteen dollars, we can buy a can and stuff ourself and just put it in that corner.
Yes, I think that's certain.
Yes.
The other thing is
Better than having me complain about my
That's right.
My rights.
And then the other thing is, I would very much appreciate a digital copy of the lease, because if we are gonna modify it
Yeah, yeah, that's much
it makes it easier to deal with. Is that alright with you?
Digital copy of the lease, yeah, sure.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Cause it's hard copy, I don't wanna start scratching things out and going type it.
Sure, we can let you go. I just kidding, just so you could read it, you know, so you know, look at it.
Yeah, sure.
Alright, alright, very good. Um, excellent, alright, so now, hi, Lisa Rose.
Oh, God, you're not coming home, huh?
Doing good.
Making sure it's
Good.
We're gonna tell you the same thing we tell him, bitchboard.
Everybody looks at the damn shelf, that's what I'm saying.
I just
About self, that's okay, the only thing, Guy, is if if uh, you send the paperwork back, they usually give us an account number. And when I order, it's all they ask for the account number, so if you can get that in
Okay, yep. Uh, is there an account number on it? Because we have an established account.
Customer number?
Yes, customer number.
Okay, yeah, I'll give you, you'll get a, I'm gonna give you a copy of it, I get signed.
Yeah, yeah, that's okay. Okay, so since the last meeting, um we installed the the three foot diameter culvert up on Putney Mountain, just off where the pavement used to be, you know, for the image. And that also completed the uh, road segment, um road grant that we had for there, so that is all complete. I believe Jeff Nugent has done, or sent somebody to take pictures of that, now it's just the matter of getting the paperwork uh completed. Um, I also went around and and mulch aid over all of the disturbed construction areas that I had opened up with the rented excavator. Um, I also have this, uh, I talked with John Swing again, and Bennett wrote, it is a five four trio for the town, we do have uh some duties to keep it uh passable. And John uh still uses his camp, it's the only, well, it's not the only place on the road, but it's the only one on the class four part of it. And in between meetings, uh, somebody had come through from Holly Hill and which is good, rode over within a half mile of Swing's camp. They they went in his camp and messed his camp up a little bit, nothing major, just, I don't know. Turned things over and used that and and states, uh, but anyway, there was a vehicle uh tried to come down the hill on Putney Mountain Road from the king up, and got stopped because it's so bad bad. And we, there is five culverts on the hill that was eating, and the water now uh jumps all the water barriers that are separate from the culverts, and comes clear down to Putney Mountain. So, I'm not sure where we're at with the budget, uh, I went, I walked up there to check it out when I was working up there. And there are some two foot and better uh roofs from where the water ate through the water barriers came down. Exposed some of the culverts. Um, I wondered if we could use maybe a one day with an excavator to use what materials are left there to reshape the road, flatten it out, um make some water barriers with whatever's there, and also make some runouts that would allow the water to go away from the road, and at the same time, clean the inlets and outlets of the existing culverts so that they do work. I believe uh, a one day with an excavator would uh make that road passable up to the camp.
Mm-hmm.
Uh
It is, it is like a, are we liable, or is that, is it is it a town responsibility, you're saying, you keep the class going?
What's a class four rule?
Class four, uh, it doesn't, yeah, huge maintenance, but we do uh, you know, monitor
Do you remember when we did Greer Road and and we did the travel up there, and we said that that was passable, so we did that, so I do remember
Yeah. Yeah, so we, I think, keep it passable, I was gonna get here a little bit early to read the orange handbook, see how it's working, whether you get uh, willing enough to do that. But I didn't, go ahead, Steve.
I I happen to be looking at requirements for road work in the past two weeks, and um it's a very nebulous statement, it says the town is required to keep it passable, doesn't say to what level, passable.
Yeah, yeah.
Pretty vague.
It's always been pretty basic on that road, if I recall it, like, I can kind of describe, so
Right.
There is some liability that we have a responsibility, or what responsibility it seems. I mean, that's why I just read these by chance.
Yeah.
Kind of right, yeah. What's that? Looking at about thousands of dollars, I don't know, roughly, because your tax rate goes what, eighty ninety dollars an hour, I'm guessing.
Yeah. Four Yeah. And you know, this would turn the water so that it doesn't come down to Putney Mountain.
Has there been damage done on Putney Mountain because of, because of that particular?
During the flood, yeah, but but also the damage that was on Putney Mountain Road itself, it just added to it. And and now the water has stopped, but it's set up for if we do get more remedies that will come all the way to the bottom.
Just do it.
I remember going up there, I once appraised that camp.
Okay.
Uh, and I recall that it was not very good.
Yeah.
Passable, but man, it needed four wheel drive, lots of land, rocks sticking out, and uh, and if you're lucky, it come out, the exhaust system's still on the car.
Yeah, four wheel drive.
Well, you've been taking care of that for years, though, right?
Yeah, I, before I was working for the town, um, there was an agreement with Johnny's dad, Mr. Swing, uh would purchase materials if the town would apply them. And since then, Mr. Swing has passed away, but John now owns the camp, and I know that he would like to continue to have family gathering to be able to
So you don't think there's any additional materials, you're gonna use what's on site?
I think if you use what's on site, I I think you could make it passable. Cause it it's some coarse gravel, and coarse gravel will stay in place uh better than anything else.
My memory is getting worse as I get older. Uh, back when that agreement was made with Mr. Swing, it's the Johnny's father, that was, I somehow had the impression that was a one time deal, it didn't commit us to any, at the town, to anything in the future, do you even know anything about that?
I don't, I was just going on what what I was told, and I don't know if that was Nelson Fontaine, but John could probably shed later on who, how that came to effect, and if it's on paper, but I I've never seen nothing.
It wasn't a select board minutes back then, cause I remember at the time, I was either on the board or had just gotten off the board. It was in the minutes, and and I thought, gee, that's really kind of the select board to to do that, I was
Yeah.
It was helping somebody out that needed it, the town, I think, spent the labor, but the material was provided by Mr. Swing, if I recall correctly.
Okay, so so you're thinking it was just more or less for one, one season?
Yeah, yeah, I I seem to recall that specifically being
Sure.
stated somewhere, I mean, I'd be happy to look it up if I can find it.
Well, um, yeah, I mean, I I know
If that's of any consequence to what we decide today, I don't know.
Yeah, being that it is a town road, I I don't know where we stand, uh as far as making it passable, but I think there weren't handbooks, the only thing that would let us, you know The only thing that would let us, you know, know the requirements of how much to go into that. It does go from one town to another and, uh, not that it's used by a lot of public, but public this. It's actually surprising, I do see a lot of vehicles come through there, while I'm making Putney Mountain dirt bikes, four wheelers, but. Jeepers, you know, people jeeps, uh, so anyway, I, John's asked me a couple times what the town's gonna do and. Uh, I believe he's talked with Archie and I just wasn't sure, uh, where to take it.
I understand.
There, I mean, there is the one, it's not a resident, it's a camp, yeah, so.
Alright, well, I think then.
No, nothing.
Um, if it's if it's a responsibility that we have to get it back to that, and there's no materials involved. If we do need materials, maybe we need to approach Johnny to hold to to that particular.
Sure.
Uh, part of it, but um, I I I'm guessing that not to try not to exceed a thousand dollars.
Yeah, one one day, it just some change, no materials, you get it to a point where it could be.
One day material disbursement on it.
You know, if he wants to do more, he he probably will.
Okay. To do more, but.
He could come to meet you and talk with us.
Okay, alright, so you'll talk to anybody about that?
Sure, I know, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so also, it's been one day, uh, had gravel delivered to me with one truck. Uh, continuously for the whole entire day, uh, covering uh road repair, the base gravel that was used for flood repair. Is now covered with a finished gravel that you treat with the grader, uh, kind, like it once was before the the flood. So that was a big improvement and uh. I planned to go out, uh, some of our other roads and just touch them up with the graders within the next couple of weeks. Um, and I I was gonna ask, you know, where we were at with the budget for FEMA, but. I guess we're we're working on that and I I think I'd be glad to sat with whoever with my pictures and my drawing things.
Yeah, we got. Yes, yes, that's right.
Um, and then I was gonna talk about the blacktop repairs, but we're gonna put together the RFP for that, I got the information, um. I also, in my travels, uh, a separate uh blacktop repair, and this is something we can talk about through the winter, I guess, but. Um, the intersection of Putney Mountain, uh, going onto the bridge, uh, got roughed up during the flood. And I don't know if that could be added in as part of the pavement.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, damage from the flood that came down from Merrill Drive.
Right, so. It's kinda, I know that I could put some patch on it, but if you if you're only doing like an inch, the patch doesn't stay there.
Right, yeah.
So it should be, they call it zip down, they grind it out a little deeper.
Paint it.
And then it stays, if you go two to three inches, it stays in place way better. So that's something that we should look at.
Could that be part of the paving RFP for the Putney Mountain Road?
I believe it, yeah, it's in.
Yeah.
Right, we're gonna talk about how to do the contract versus paving, but that's a good point.
But, sure, and I, yeah, that sounds good, um. And probably in the spring, I'm not sure if we wanna do another shim or just some repairs, but. Uh, out on that the bend, the corner of Bassett Brook Road by the the West River, um. I know that it's kind of rough just before the corner.
Yep.
It's it's breaking down into two or three layers, a long stretch, and I know the plow shoes on the plow. Hit that same spot by spring, we're gonna have kind of a rough transition through there with the the weather.
Is this coming around from uh McCaughy?
Yes, McCaughy lives there with, um.
In Simplicity's daughter, his wife.
Yes, yep, right, and and the water comes out of the next house up, which is McAllister's complex.
Yeah, yeah, I can't. Yes, right.
And uh, there's a section there that, I don't know if it if it were shimmed, it was shimmed a number of years ago.
Yep.
Just to buy some time and now we're kind of through the shim and.
So what do you suggest?
Well, I think we should just talk it over, uh, to see what to do.
Is that all part of that road that's starting to deteriorate rapidly, going into the river?
Yeah, it is, there's. The whole section along the river, it's it's a, I don't know, it's thirteen hundred feet, I think we.
Yeah.
We had it shimmied years ago and it's that same area, some of it's uh weathering better than others, so.
No, but it's a problem there.
Not knowing how much it would cost now with the paving, that's something I'd like to, uh.
Before winter? No, we're not, oh, okay, sorry.
No, not before, once spring is here.
But once the frost gets in there.
Alright.
Which which route to go, whether to shim it or grind it up and redo that section or.
Okay.
There's a lot of issues there to look at, but I know it's getting rough, I I have patched some of it and the patches just don't stay. Something it maybe could get.
Okay.
You know, there's those certain areas, if they were ground out, like somebody like O'Brien Brothers. Like the patch they did at Howard's before we paved, maybe we could talk to them about, uh, just fixing the worst of it.
Mm-hmm.
Is any of that out the money available for any paving or anything?
I'm not sure yet, I think.
Because that part of road is deteriorating, cause it's got, they've used wood underneath to fill it in, and it's slowly but surely rotting more and more.
Yeah.
And eventually that will probably go into the river.
Well, that, when we sit down to make a list.
That's a major, major project.
Yeah. Um, I, I put in this, this slipway open post, put it to butter out here. I've got more culverts uh in stock at Town Garage to put in, uh, I've also, some will be, uh. Replacements and and I have a couple of places I would like to just add new culverts, uh. To make it a better drainage, so those would be on the list for next, next summer.
With your new machine?
Hopefully, yeah, or, you know, however it works out, but yes, that would be nice, uh.
Yeah. Yeah.
You're gonna wheelbarrow pick?
Yeah, okay.
Two, two bucks, two wheelbarrows.
I've also got the handicap signs to install with some line paints, and there'll be some trees that I'm, I'm gonna be removing. There there are trees that fit my category of tree removal, away from tower lines, uh, light duty, um.
Did you ever get the fence posts?
For.
School?
Yep, that that's all done.
You did that today, did you?
Oh, great, thanks.
Yeah, thank you very much, uh, it's great. Before snow?
Yeah, so that that does everything the past couple of weeks and. Um, the only, I guess I do have one question and I was gonna wait to ask Guy or maybe the board, but. So, uh, had a couple opportunities to get multi from vendors in town and. Uh, just wondered how to go about paying them for the hay, I I've gotten the hay used it.
Guess submit an invoice.
Have them give me a bill and then I'll give the trail to the camp.
Yep. Yeah, they have to have a paper, paper trail for the.
Okay, good product.
Right, and and uh, he's also a vendor on our list already, so we already have it's blue, right?
Okay. Uh, no, um, you had told me about, uh, about the farm.
Yeah.
And and Howard, and then, uh, Tommy Brooks stopped by to see me, he had a batch of hay that had rained on and couldn't use it.
Okay.
And he didn't want it in his barn because it's.
It's hot.
Heating up and, so he told me to come and get it as needed, so it worked out good, uh, and.
Perfect.
He told me what he wants for it, I just didn't know how to.
Yeah, just have him write a bill, handwrite a bill.
Yep. Invoice the town and.
Just name, address, phone number, contact and.
Or is it less than six hundred dollars?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, wait, oh, yeah.
These better be, less than six dollars a bale.
You may need another employee where she does. I'll just say that.
That it?
Yeah, we're good.
Alright, very good, alright, so we're gonna move on here, um. I'm gonna leave with the treasurer, the appropriations request for three hundred dollars from the ground works collaborative, and appropriations request for one hundred dollars for Vermont Association of Line. And visibly impaired, I also got an email, um, I uh, still this out in tomorrow and sending it, it's a municipal litigation grant. And aid for fiscal year twenty twenty two, so it's all here, I just will fill it out and then we'll fax it tomorrow, we can fax a couple different things tomorrow.
Okay.
But that's all.
That's an intent thing as well, yes.
Say it again?
That's an intent, uh.
This is, um, I guess so, yeah, I guess so.
For next summer?
Yeah, for next year's, uh, people work, so, and we have to hand, yes, it's a grantee, so the town of Brooklyn, so it's pretty much a good one. Um, alright. And regular mail, can we do that real quickly, I'll pass this around, we have some mail from. Southern Vermont Therapeutic Riding Center, uh, I guess this has to do with the appropriations. So.
Same thing.
You know, I don't see the number on here, you can go back if you don't mind, probably from the Department of Health.
Is that?
Five hundred bucks.
Yep.
It's a professional data analysis to conduct a survey about perspectives on substance use issues. Um, and efficiency Vermont. Yeah, th- this is interesting, I have to call them because it says, um. If you're using fluorescent lightings, uh, you can get discounts on high quality lighting for your business, however, you know, the lighting that we're talking about getting, I don't know.
Well, I'm gonna ask, um, Mr. Larson, if we can submit a invoice and get money back, because efficiency Vermont is willing to give us some money.
So, so, oh, we don't have to buy it from them to have him in.
I don't think so, I I didn't read that letter carefully, but it's my understanding that we would get credit.
If we got the writing done, and that's what we're doing, okay, and then Grace Cottage Hospital and appropriation request for three hundred dollars, so, uh, that goes with the others.
Yes, yes.
Um, so at this time now, I am going to go over our pay orders.
You wanna go back to the, to the item on, in regard to Townsend, anything else you do regarding, about people who have.
Oh, yes. Okay. I, yes. Um, we talked about, we tabled briefly the response to, um, the flagons in Townsend, and and I agree that it's. Address that specifically is probably not on our legal best interest, however, I sat here and viewed a couple of statements and I. I like Brooklyn is proud to be a welcoming community and and is supportive of our like minded neighboring towns. Any other suggestions?
I agree with what you done, uh, it sounds good, and there's one other characteristic that, uh, Ron Lake, the Select Board Chair in Townsend, the Decatur. He mentioned it in passing, I don't know what it implies or means, but he said the kind of letter that he could write as the town in which the event occurred, occurred. Was significantly different than the letters that he was able to, than different than the statement the surrounding towns could make.
Correct.
So that to me almost says, in a way, or implies that it it needs to be different, that we.
Yeah, we're we're not addressing a particular instance, but we're just addressing the fact that that we're welcoming and we believe our our neighboring towns are are like minded in that and and.
Yeah, as a neighbor, we share the same feelings, you know, just acknowledge, I guess.
So. I will, uh, write this up, I'll and, uh, I'll send it out to you guys, and if you want me to table it, I will wait to the next meeting, if not, I will, I'll, I just send it, send it.
I I I'll make the motion, we take a vote on the issue and.
Alright.
Uh, I know, I know, uh, what, you know, David hasn't shown up, but since we're getting on the topic, I make a motion, we take a vote on the issue.
Right, right. Alright, so.
Your second?
I'll I'll second that, any discussion?
Hearing none, all those in favor of sending a general statement of support, like minded welcoming communities, uh, as Brooklyn and our neighbors. More of those lines signify by saying yes, bye, okay, uh, for, very good, everyone is agreement to simple, the two, Townsend Select Board and that.
Alright, so, here's my notes here.
Thank you for doing.
Okay, anything else, payroll warrants. I'd like to make a motion to approve payroll warrant number twenty twenty two dash fifteen, dated October thirteenth, two thousand twenty one. In the amount of seven thousand eight hundred eighteen dollars and seventeen cents, may I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bruce, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving payroll warrant twenty twenty two dash fifteen, dated the thirteenth of October. For the amount of seven thousand eight hundred eighteen dollars and seventeen cents, signify by saying aye, aye, and the opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes and I'll send this around through your signature. This is a big one too, alright, uh, I'd like to turn to. Um. I always broke it down, alright, I'd like to make a motion that we approve accounts payable warrant twenty twenty two dash sixteen. B, as in boy, is there an A? Twenty twenty two dash sixteen B as in boy, dated October twentieth, two thousand twenty one. In the amount of forty thousand six hundred thirteen dollars and ninety nine cents, may I have a second?
Question? I don't know when is appropriate.
You can do that during discussion.
Okay, I'll just second.
Seconded by Stan, any discussion, Stan?
Yeah, the the amount under the second line on this, it's ninety five hundred and sixty two dollars. For, what what is that relative to?
The dump truck rental that includes the gravel, correct? Mark, uh, E and N logging and land clearing.
I always miss any of that.
Okay, let me, let me pull it out here.
You're gonna say, uh.
My.
Ninety five hundred forty two dollars for you on the dump rental of the dump truck?
Yeah, the dump truck rental.
But what's the project?
Uh, if the gravel's all over town, I I separated on the mill, but that's the total for a month of.
So it was FEMA? Oh.
Was this some of the FEMA problems too?
Yes, it's.
Yes, so, yeah, I I didn't mind talking here, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, oh, great, it's, uh, it's for the grant on Straker Road, it's for Putney Mountain repairs, uh.
But that's your dump truck?
My dad.
Yeah, okay, alright, no, so we didn't have to rent something?
Yeah. No, no, that's the way the, the board had set up and down.
Yep, yeah, we're using FEMA.
And then that's repairs on, uh, Grant, uh, Gill Road, uh, where we've been doing drainage, and also where, you know.
Uh-huh.
Thank you, all those that discovered as well, but thank you.
I think I didn't recognize the name, right?
Yeah, me and my dad and me, uh, we have, you know, together.
Thank you for telling, appreciate it.
Right, it's automatic.
Any other questions for discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving a cash payable warrant. Twenty twenty two dash sixteen B dated the twentieth of October for forty thousand six hundred thirteen dollars and ninety nine cents, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? No, okay, um. Let me see something here a little quickly, this is why there's an A and a B. All right, let me sign this and I'll pass it now. Must be important, use my handwriting, it's very sloppy.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll move along, set agenda for the next meeting, November second. We'll talk about the paving and any other things that may come out um
Uh I just had uh at the last meeting, we brought up uh on the paper, I've always did the work that we talked about on the drainage project on Hill Road, like it's the Romans.
Mm-hmm.
And I did cover it, hey, not knowing if we were gonna get to it before winter, but I did uh just wanted to make sure we're on the same page that repairs
Postponed, postponed until springtime. You gotta handle on our money and um yes, I can see that.
Yeah, that answers my question.
The only thing I we didn't talk about that I wanted to was a concern that you had about covering up the gravel that's available in the yard that has is not in a shed that we might at some point.
Yeah, that's something
I don't know if we can tarp it for now.
The tarp might help, yeah, to keep moisture out, keep breathing, so
I think that would be something I would certainly
That would be the the most expensive
Way to at least to start with.
Yeah.
Is that something that you could shop for and get in the DZ tarp and can use that?
Yeah. Yeah, in a small party of that, the right size stone and cover it, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, cause either way, that's that fits our budget for
Right, cause I'm sure a tarp would be less than fifty dollars.
Yeah, yeah, so if we get a a spring thaw or a February thaw we might be able to jump on those repairs with some
The gravel, it's not underneath it.
It's not froze together.
Froze together.
Pretty, yeah.
That makes it easier.
Yeah, oh, sure.
Okay, so uh at this time, I entertain a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this evening's meeting and
Did you need to set the agenda first?
Well, the only setting was heading RFP and to be determined, I'm not exactly sure.
And it changed the date to November third.
Oh, the the next meeting is November third, not November second. Thank you. I would've showed up, nobody been here. All right, um All right, um so I made the motion, may I have a second?
So who?
Seconded by Bruce. Any uh discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adjourn the evening's meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned at nine oh seven PM. Thank you.